Sid, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, okay. But this is interesting. Okay.
Sid, let me know on Teams. Alright, great. Thank you.
Okay, we're good. You can, you can set that up. She's ready to go.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good one.
We're gonna get started in a second. Can the cameras hear? Can you guys just confirm for me? This is a sound check. You're good? Everybody's got sound? All right, just another minute or two, we're gonna get started.
Perfect.
How are you? Good, I'm really good. Good to see you. Welcome to the city. Thank you, nice to meet you.
They're cheerful. I find cheerful.
How are you? Good to see you. I love your flowers.
How are you? Good.
How are you doing?
Almost.
We need your attention. Happy birthday, by the way. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I want to begin by discussing the dire need for leadership right now. The events of these past few weeks in our city have been troubling. The recent resignation of four deputy mayors who managed practically all of our city's agencies is a development we cannot afford. That's why I called for Mayor Adams to step aside. The stakes are too high for us to have a diminished mayoral administration. We need an administration that can sound the alarm about what is at stake and work with the city's partners to protect New Yorkers. The federal budget proposed proposal passed by the Trump Control Congress this week is another action that would hurt families in our city and across the nation by defunding health care, food assistance, and other life-saving programs. It would shutter hospitals and health clinics, hurting the health and safety of people across our city and country by deeply cutting Medicaid that provides health care to more than 70 million Americans. Up to 36 million Americans could lose their health care. Over 41 million Americans depend on SNAP food assistance that this proposed budget seeks to cut. These are actions that would be an attack on families and make life less affordable. This all comes as the proportion of New Yorkers living in poverty is almost double the national average and has been increasing. One in four children is living in poverty. And this federal budget is slashing resources for working families, all to pay for tax cuts for the wealthiest, as the richest person in the world, who no one elected, attacks services for working families. Most of these tax cuts would go to the wealthiest 10% of the nation, half of which would go to the top 1% earning over $700,000 a year. This budget proposal only follows other actions by the Trump administration to hurt all Americans and New Yorkers. They have cut the public health workforce at a time when we're grappling with spikes in the flu, norovirus, a bird flu outbreak, and the spread of other diseases. They have attempted to wreak havoc on our public transit system by interfering in a congestion pricing plan that was already approved by the federal government with no plan. It will leave New Yorkers to pick up the pieces from the removal of budgeted resources for our public transit system. They even went as far as cutting funds and staff for the federal health program that supports survivors of the September 11th attacks. Trump and Elon Musk only reversed course after tremendous outcry, but uncertainty still remains. This is further proof that we must raise our collective voices to defend our values and the people of this city and country. The new administration is destabilizing our city and nation at a time when families can least afford it. Trump's agenda to sow chaos and fear is not only making our communities less safe, it's also hurting our small businesses, workers, and local economy. Again, none of this is making life more affordable for working people. We must be prepared to defend the institutions and programs that protect our families, communities, and this city. There is a lot of work ahead of us, but this council, as it has always been, is committed to fighting for New Yorkers and their needs. So let's move on to our stated agenda. 441 and 467 Prospect Avenue rezoning, also known as the Arrow Linen Proposal. This proposal will facilitate the development of two new residential buildings in Council Member Hanif's districts. With the council's modifications, the two buildings will each be 10 stories tall and include 250 housing units, 100 of which will be permanently affordable. The project includes access to subsidized space for a childcare center and a domestic violence service provider. Next, we will vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Council Member Justin Brannon establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for three lots in Council Member Stevens' district. A pre-considered resolution, also sponsored by Council Member Brannon, establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Council Member Gutierrez's district. We'll also vote on the council's fiscal 2026 proposed operating budget: $84.7 million for personal services and $30.3 million for other-than-personal services or OTPS. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Council Member Lynn Schulman calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign, A2705-S4801 relating to restoring the state aid reimbursement rate to no less than 35% for identified core public health services provided by a municipality in New York City. Introduction 794A, sponsored by Council Member Althea Stevens, would require that appointments or recommendations for youth board members be made with best efforts to ensure that appointees have demonstrated relevant experience in the area of youth welfare. Additionally, this bill would require that, to the extent practicable, at least three members of the youth board between the ages of 16 to 24, to ensure actual youth representation is on the board. Now, I invite Council Member Stevens to the podium to discuss her bill.
Good afternoon. Happy Dominican Independence Day.
Pokemon Day.
Oh, and Pokemon Day, yes. It is important. Our majority leader has been talking about it all morning. But thank you, Madam Speaker, Adams, and my colleagues, and your unwavering commitment to addressing challenges in our community face especially that are too often overlooked. Today is a critical step forward by voting for the passage of Bill Intro 794, which will require the New York City Charter to formally establish a youth board. This legislation mandates that the appointment or recommendation for the board members prioritize individuals that demonstrate experience in youth while youth development. Most importantly, it ensures that at least three members of the board are between the ages of 16 and 24, giving young people a direct voice in shaping the policies that affect their lives. For too often, decisions about youth are made without youth in the room. I've seen this firsthand throughout my years in youth development, and even more so as I entered council. Policies and programs and budgets aimed at young people can truly be effective if they are crafted with young people's input. If we're serious about investing in the next generation, we must do more to just talk about their future. We must include them in shaping it. Their voices are not just invaluable, they are essential to building more just, equitable, and forward-thinking New York City. As a representative, it's our responsibility not to just lead, but to create and uplift and empower those who will one day take our place, perhaps sooner than we think. Ensuring young people's representation is not just the right thing to do, it is necessary for a strong and more inclusive New York City. As Chair of Children and Youth, I am proud to champion this effort alongside my colleagues. Our commitment to uplifting New Yorkers will bridge a gap between city leadership and the voices that need to be heard, ensuring that every decision made truly reflects the needs of our residents. Let's stand together to make it clear, New York City youth deserves a seat at the table today, tomorrow, and always. Thank you.
Resolution 561, sponsored by Council Member Crystal Hudson, would call on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass, and the governor to sign legislation to create a statewide public guardianship system to address current inequities and deficits and to safeguard vulnerable New Yorkers in need of protective arrangements. Introduction 1092A, also sponsored by Council Member Hudson, would require the Department for the Aging, in consultation with the New York City Office of Technology and Innovation and the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, to develop printed and digital information materials to educate older adults about internet scams, phone scams, phishing scams, financial literacy, and end-of-life preparation. In addition to posting a digital version of the materials on their website, Difter would be required to distribute the materials to homebound older adults and ensure older adult centers distribute them in their facilities. I invite Council Member Hudson to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you. Let me get my trusty box here. All right, good afternoon, and thank you, Madam Speaker. As you've all heard me say before, the city's older adult population, New Yorkers ages 60 and older, will increase by a whopping 40% over just the next 15 years. Yet today, our city isn't prepared to meet this challenge. That's why last session, I launched Agent Place 2.0, a package of 11 bills that establish critical reforms to create a more inclusive New York City, not just for the 1.4 million older adults living here today, but for the generations of older adults to come. Intro 1092 is the seventh bill in my Agent Place 2.0 package to be voted on by the council. In 2023, older adults reported losing $1.9 billion to financial fraud and scams, but the Federal Trade Commission believes the real number could be as high as $61.5 billion. This bill expands education on elder fraud and financial literacy for older adults throughout the city and will ensure our older adult population has access to the resources they need to recognize potential scams, report fraudulent activity, and protect their financial well-being. By equipping older New Yorkers with knowledge, we empower them to make informed decisions and to seek help when needed. As the older adult population continues to rise and technology continues to advance rapidly, our city's legislators must do everything in their power to establish the necessary safeguards to protect the well-being of older New Yorkers, and that's exactly what we're doing today. Today, my colleagues are also voting on Resolution 561. This resolution calls on the state legislature to introduce and pass, and the governor to sign, legislation to establish a statewide network of nonprofit guardians to meet the growing demand for services while expanding capacity in communities where guardianship programs don't yet exist. For too long, access to ethical, high-quality guardianship has been inconsistent, leaving too many older adults and New Yorkers with disabilities without the support they need. By fully funding nonprofit guardianship, we'll meet the need for the system while removing the potential harm of a profit-motivated guardian that we're all too familiar with.
Introduction 1101A, sponsored by Council Member Youssef Salam, would require the NYPD to publish information on its website to help the public understand what constitutes identity theft and how to report it. The department would also be required to train officers on responding to and investigating reports of suspected identity theft. Introduction 1126A, also sponsored by Council Member Salam, would require the Department of Sanitation or another administering agency to distribute official NYC waste bins to owners of eligible buildings, which include those with up to two dwelling units where the building owner is enrolled in a New York STAR or Enhanced STAR tax benefit program. This bill would also require DSNY to establish a program to reimburse owners of eligible buildings who purchased official NYC waste bins on or before August 1st, 2026. I invite Council Salam to the podium to discuss both of these bills.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon, everyone. May the peace, mercy, and blessings from the owner of all peace, mercy, and blessings be upon each and every one of you. Today, I'm proud that I'm introducing Bills Number 1101A and 1126A. 1101A ensures that the NYPD provide clear, accessible information to the public on identity theft. What it is, how to protect yourself, and most importantly, how to report it. In addition, this bill requires specialized training for officers to properly receive and investigate identity theft complaints, ensuring that victims are met with the support that they deserve. This legislation was formed by real struggles in our communities. Organizations like Civil Legal Advice Resource Office have seen firsthand how difficult it can be for victims, especially for older adult neighbors, to file reports, clear their names from fraudulent debt, and things of that nature. Too often, people seeking help are turned away simply because the officer lacks the necessary training on identifying theft policies. That changes today. I want to thank Speaker Adams and my colleagues who have co-sponsored and supported this bill. Together, we are reinforcing our commitment to public safety and to ensuring that no New Yorker is left without resources if their identity is stolen. Intro Number 1126A ensures that we continue to implement a smarter waste management policy. It is our responsibility to ensure that no one is left behind. Last year, the city established a new requirement for waste containment, mandating that all properties with two residential units use bins with secure lids. Beginning in 2026 of June, all property owners will be required to use the official NYC bins. But for some homeowners, particularly those in smaller buildings, compliance with these new regulations can pose a financial challenge. That's why this bill is so important. Intro 1126-A will ensure that homeowners in buildings with up to two dwelling units who are enrolled in the New York State STAR or Enhanced STAR tax relief program receive official NYC waste bins at no cost. Additionally, for those purchasing the bins before August 1st of 2026, a reimbursement program will be established. This is about fairness, accessibility, and making sure that we are not burdening our residents as we work towards a cleaner city. This provides the necessary tools free of charge and ensures that our waste collection efforts remain equitable and that all New Yorkers, regardless of income, can comply with these regulations without unnecessary hardship. A cleaner New York is in all of our best interests, and this bill is a step towards making that goal a reality.
Introduction 498A, sponsored by Council Member Shawna Brayu, would require DSNY to collect organic waste from community gardens upon request. Community gardens would be able to make such requests through an online application portal. Council Member Brayu could not be with us today, but we acknowledge him today. Introduction 1061A, sponsored by Council Member Farrah Lewis, would amend the Department of Corrections semi-annual reports on alleged incidents and investigations of sexual harassment and abuse to require a unique identification number for each alleged incident. It would also require DOC to provide a justification for not reporting any substantiated allegations to a district attorney's office. I invite Council Member Lewis to discuss her important legislation.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, Speaker Adams, for recognizing the urgency of this crisis and ensuring it receives the attention and demand. I'm Council Member Farrah Lewis, Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. Last year, I introduced Intro 1061 to address a gross Last year, I introduced Intro 1061 to address a gross miscarriage of justice, one that has allowed violence at Rikers Island to persist in silence. Imagine arriving at Rikers Island for a routine intake, vulnerable, disoriented, trying to navigate an unfamiliar system. You wouldn't expect deception, harassment, or sexual assault to be a part of the process. Yet, for far too long, those in custody, especially women and LGBTQ+ individuals, have faced violence without accountability. Their suffering has too often been ignored, their abusers shielded by a system that has failed to protect them. That changes today. With the passage of Intro 1061, we're bringing long overdue accountability to our correctional system. This legislation replaces secrecy with transparency, demands answers where there has been silence, and ensures that no allegation of sexual abuse is ignored. Every New Yorker in custody deserves protection from violence, and every incident must be reported. The scale of this crisis is staggering. More than 700 incarcerated women sued the city last year under the Adult Survivors Act, exposing a pattern of rampant sexual abuse by jail staff. Jail wardens and even medical personnel have been named as perpetrators, engaging in groping, forcible touching, and other forms of sexual violence. These are not isolated incidents, and they are systemic failures that have persisted for decades. An audit by the city council's data team confirmed what we already knew. The Department of Corrections' reporting practices are deeply flawed. The reports mandated by Local Law 21 of 2019 lack transparency, use vague and undefined terms, and fail to provide a clear accounting of allegations and investigations. Without accountability, these failures put those in custody, particularly women and LGBTQ+ individuals, at risk of unreported violence. Intro 1061 takes direct action to fix this. It requires the Department of Corrections to assign unique identifiers for each incident and victim, improve reporting clarity, and justify when substantiated cases are not referred to district attorneys. This is a crucial step toward ensuring that those in custody are protected, not preyed upon, but the very system that's meant to oversee them. I am proud of this council and this body for allowing me to introduce this bill. Thank you, Speaker Adams, for your staunch advocacy on this as well, to end the rampant cycle of sexual abuse that has persisted at Rikers for far too long.
Thank you. Introduction 565A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the Campaign Finance Board, in consultation with the Board of Elections and the Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, to develop guidance on the procedures under the New York State election law for making a voter record confidential and for voting by special ballot. The bill would also require ENDGBV to distribute that guidance to family justice centers and to provide survivors with information on how to get assistance in preparing and submitting written statements to the Board of Elections to make their voter records confidential or establish their eligibility to vote by special ballot. I invite Councilmember Brewer to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So, yes, this is the Voter Confidentiality for Domestic Violence Survivor Bill, 565 of 2024. And as you heard earlier, it builds upon critical legislation that was passed in Albany in 2021, signed by the governor, and that enables survivors of domestic violence to request confidential voter registration directly from the Board of Elections, bypassing the court process in the past. If they wanted to make a vote registration and vote, they had to go to court. This bypasses that. It was absolutely clear that the state legislation represented a significant step forward. But today, many survivors remain unaware of how to access these protections, and that's why this law is important. As you heard earlier, it requires city agencies, particularly those serving survivors, through the family justice centers, to provide clear guidance and resources, and how survivors can ensure that their vote registration remains confidential, and how they can vote by special ballot. As you know, many people who are domestic violence survivors end up in what we would call safe houses, and the worst thing you want is the safe house address to be known by your perpetrator. Even if you have some safeguards from the court, you still end up often with a perpetrator finding you and doing the kind of harm that you have run from. So I want to thank the organizations that supported this bill, including the Crime Victims' Treatment Center, Common Cause, League of Women Voters, Muslim Community Network, Sanctuary for Families, Voices for Women Organizing, New Destiny, Safe Horizon, and, of course, the New York Campaign Finance Board, which has indicated they want to work on this. We want people to vote, but we don't want them to be killed while they're trying to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Introduction 9B, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, would require the Administration for Children's Services to provide information about legal services for parents or guardians after ACS makes contact with them for the first time, at the onset of an ACS child protective investigation or an ACS child protective response. I invite our deputy speaker to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For decades, ACS has faced complaints about their invasive methods, which disproportionately impact Black and Latino low-income families. In 2022, a ProPublica report found that ACS caseworkers were granted permission to enter people's homes for less than 0.2% of their searches. That's partially because many parents and guardians are unaware of their legal rights in the event of an ACS encounter. Families deserve to understand their rights and to have access to legal resources when they are involved in an ACS investigation or search. Too often, families simply comply with ACS requests without knowing that they have legal rights. This bill will change this by requiring ACS to provide information to parents and guardians so that they know what their rights are. It represents a step towards equity in child welfare, ensuring all families, regardless of background, are treated fairly and have the resources to exercise their rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know you were all waiting for that one. I appreciate you all coming to hear my bill.
Thank you so much. And that concludes our stated agenda. With that, we'll all take on-topic questions first.
Questions on the stated agenda?
What? What are you all here for?
Me?
You're a little distracted, Katie.
Off-topic questions?
Not a single question on my bill?
Later.
You did such a good job of explaining.
Speaker Adams, we all are here to ask you about your pilot committee. You essentially run for mayor, Adrian, for your city. Do you want to talk about your mayor role? Mayor O'Rourke, you alluded to it at the start of this, about the lack of leadership. So just give us all the details about it, and while you're jumping in now, it seems like, you know, just talk about your...
Katie, you've just taken every question in the room, I guess, then? All of it? Okay. All right. Well, thank you for the question, of course. I have taken some initial steps to ensure that I am prepared to quickly advance a campaign if and when I make a decision to run. Those things entail setting up a committee, preparing to put petitions in the field, setting up a campaign team, and, of course, participating in endorsement screenings, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I'll also just, you know, let you know that I didn't seek this, it wasn't in my plans, but as more serious stakeholders in our city have indeed urged me to consider serving the city in this capacity, I've given it much more serious consideration. We have an urgency in this moment. The need for dignified, steady leadership that puts New Yorkers first and fights for our city is something that we need now more than ever before. My obligation to public service for this city and to help my fellow New Yorkers, my neighbors, as I always say, we're our own best constituents here, is why I'm so seriously considering campaigning to become the first woman mayor of the city of New York.
Was there a specific stakeholder who kind of pushed you into the consideration for you, or was there one? I know Attorney General Tish James was channing for you to run at caucus weekend. I don't know if there was one in particular that really shifted your viewpoint.
I've been encouraged by a lot of stakeholders, even before that particular event. So I think that event, as far as the groundswell, was quite the crescendo, even for me. I was there to accept, you know, the Shirley Chisholm Award, which was an honor in and of itself. So, you know, with that crescendo that night is quite impactful, but there have been several stakeholders that have been encouraging me along the way to do this.
Hi, Speaker.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. I was just wondering, you know, is there anything with the candidates in the race right now that makes you feel like you're maybe better suited to take on some of the top contenders, especially former Governor Andrew Cuomo, if he were to decide to run the race, or the current mayor?
Great question, and thank you, Morgan. I believe, you know, and you all visit me, you know, every other Thursday here in the Red Room. We've been doing this work alongside with this administration for a number of years. We're about to enter into the next budget season, which we're looking forward to, by the way. So this is work that we've been doing really close and upfront, you know, I believe like no other. So we're doing this work. We are, you know, close and in touch with our city agencies, of course, our beloved, you know, deputy mayors, you know, that unfortunately are leaving us, we're very sad to see them go, you know, and a whole lot of others that we've been working side by side with for years. So we've done this work. We know the work of the council inside and out. This institution is very, very strong, has been for decades upon decades. So I feel that I have the leadership experience, you know, to go forth.
Madam Speaker, you seemed in your initial remarks to have a passionate concern for both what the mayor has been going through and what's going on in Washington.
Yeah.
Could you tell me why you think you are the best person to right the ship of the city and also stand up to Donald Trump and all the things that he has been already trying to do to New York City?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and welcome back to the Red Room, by the way. It's good to see you. You know, as I previously said, I don't think that there's anybody closer to this situation as far as being, you know, co-equal branch of government. That's already, you know, stated in the case. The work that we've already been doing over the years, my portfolio, even before coming into political life, my life in corporate America, I've got business experience, management experience, I have local experience from my community board, which started way before I even, you know, ran for anything, then moving through my city council experience, and now on to, you know, being elected by my colleagues to be their speaker. It's an awesome thing. I have done tremendous work with this body, these brilliant minds. People kind of questioned whether or not it would ever be done, but this woman majority and the men that get it have pulled a lot of things together with a lot of patience, with a lot of grace, I believe, also. It hasn't been easy, as I'm sure everybody in this room has witnessed it, it hasn't been easy. But we've done our due diligence for the city. We've done our due diligence with the budgets. We've brought things back where things were taken away from women, from seniors, our libraries, our cultural institutions. We've done this hard work to protect New Yorkers. This is something that we are going to continue to do and bring this forward, you know, in this move, should we go forward with this. The Trump administration, as I mentioned, you know, stands in the way of working people. This is somebody that we are, a force that we are used to fighting for and with. We know that whoever the next mayor is, the target is already on New York City. We're already going to be there in the crosshairs. My vision, though, is that New Yorkers do not become sacrifices to this dangerous administration. So if I go forward with this, my task is going to be to fight to make sure that New York gets everything that we deserve and to collaborate when possible with the administration.
So if I could just follow up.
Yep.
You seem in your speech at the opening remarks that you're truly horrified by what's happening across the hall. The deputy mayor is resigning, the mayor refusing to stand up to Donald Trump. How will you fix that?
By being the voice that I don't hear coming from across the hallway. My opening remarks, I think, everything that I said, calling out the Trump administration, calling out the leaders that have been put in place to oversee thousands of federal workers and others, our healthcare system, our education system, which may be gone, and a lot of other things that we're facing right now. I don't hear that coming across from the voice of New York, from the leader of this city. I just laid out just a few things. So I intend to be that voice, strong and steady, unapologetically, speaking up for the New Yorkers, for New Yorkers, the voice for the voiceless that we need right now.
Speaker, a quick question. I mean, Trump's of the mayor certainly has criticized the Trump administration, as you just have, and his argument has been that he needs to work with the mayor. It doesn't make sense for him to criticize the deputy policy. And I'm wondering if you do that at all, and that is made, because you said you do have worked with Trump.
And I agree with the collaborative sense. What I don't agree with, though, is being silent on the harm that is being inflicted upon New Yorkers, working-class, working families right now, everybody that is in the crosshairs of this administration right now. That's the part that I don't agree with. You got to say something about that. Too many people are being affected by that, being hurt by that. We just heard the governor announce she's gotten now an open slate. Come on, we got jobs for you. You know, the jobs that were taken, the federal jobs that were taken away. We have to start speaking like that, you know, as leaders for New York City and standing up. We have crises. We just gave out statistics for child poverty, the statistics on poverty. What this new administration stands to do right now is to increase that. We have to talk about that. So things that are not being spoken about right now, that's the part that we need to say out front unabashedly, unashamed. We need to say those things for the benefit of all New Yorkers that are looking for leadership right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Madam Speaker.
Hi, Melissa. Good.
Good to see you. I have two questions, if it's okay. First is, what do you think about the sense of inevitability that is developing around a potential Andrew Cuomo comeback? And is that part of what's motivating you to consider entering this race? We know how you feel about Mayor Adams, but is the point or the rationale for you also about blocking Cuomo?
Well, my rationale is really, again, the state of the city, and, you know, who has the experience right now on day one to come in? Who's been working with the agencies? Who's been working with the administrative leadership right now? And I've been that person. Whether, you know, Andrew Cuomo enters the race or not, he's going to have to answer for his own record, just like the rest of us are, and the voters are going to have to evaluate the records of all of the candidates. So, you know, I'm not really here to say whether or not he should be in or out. Clearly, it's his decision. It looks like something that he is going to do regardless. But I want to restore that top-city government officials are the best people to deliver for New Yorkers right now, not those who particularly value, you know, their political loyalty to any mayor.
Okay. And then I just also wanted to ask you, earlier this week, we recorded on a radio interview that Andrew Cuomo did back in December, which really didn't get much attention at the time, but on WABC Radio, former Governor Cuomo said that President Trump was targeted by Letitia James and Alvin Brack, and that the New York cases against Trump were politically motivated. Does that raise questions for you about his independence from Trump?
You know, again, I can't really, you know, speak to Andrew Cuomo's motivations, his thoughts or anything like that, but I am really curious to hear when and if he announces answers to those questions that you just asked.
Just to follow Melissa's question, I think the reason we're asking about former governor so much is he seems to have a base that overlaps with yours, and a lot of people there already seem to think his experience running state government makes him the antidote to the chaos happening on the other side of the city wall. So I guess I'll ask just slightly differently. Is, why not just get behind him if some people in your base are already thinking he's the answer, and what distinguishes you from his experience maybe that's?
Thank you for the question. Again, I think that my experience, no, I know that my experience on a city level, close, real, and personal with city government, is something that is unique, potentially in me getting into this race. For those that, you know, believe in Andrew Cuomo, again, we will let the voters decide on those things. I can't answer for that. And, you know, the other factor also is that, you know... I can't answer for that. And, you know, the other factor also is that, you know, when and if I announce, it may be, you know, something that turns the tide completely. So we're going to wait and see how that pans itself out.
Madam Speaker, who's encouraging you to run?
Many people have expressed their belief in my capability to be the first woman mayor of the city of New York. Many people. So without naming names, let's just say there are names that you know, names that you don't know, but many, many people. And Councilmember Hudson even said, you know, more names than, you know.
How many do you count?
There you go.
Why can't we get named? I mean, how are we supposed to know the level of support encouraging you? And you make mentions of stakeholders, but that could be anyone. I mean, I'm a stakeholder. Like, what is it? Why can't we have some names?
I think that names have already been put out there, Dan, quite frankly, you know. Can I confirm them?
You said the names are out there.
Sure, I can confirm them. Whatever names that you've heard have been put out there. There are statements that have been made by individuals that have expressed their support and belief in my candidacy, and their names are out there.
Speaker, so what is going into your decision to run? You know, previously you said that you weren't really interested. You know, and you said that there's a lot of people asking you to now. So I guess personally, what are you thinking about?
Yeah, thank you, Ethan. And, you know, again, I think that I answered part of that question already. Full transparency, this is not something that is just coming about yesterday, last month. It's something that's actually been in the back of my mind for quite a while. And it's been because of the work that this council has put forward, the hard work that we have wanted to work in collaboration with this administration, that quite frankly, and you all have noticed, it's no secret, it's been difficult. So it's been something in the back of my mind for quite a while. How to make things right. What does a relationship with the city council look like with a true collaborative partner? And we have not really enjoyed that type of situation. So coming in with that experience, with that thought, that's what's pushing me. The events, you know, as of the past few months have put New York in such a dire situation. The faith in our leadership is debilitating for some people in New York right now to know that they need a voice and what they are seeing is, you know, a voice that has been stifled, quite frankly, and not really able to express the thoughts, the feelings and the workings of all New Yorkers. And that's why I'm doing this. I feel like, and again, I'm not announcing anything, but what I'm thinking is that somebody has to be the voice of the soul of the city, if that makes any sense. Somebody has to feel what New Yorkers are feeling. When I walk out of my front door and I remember that I lived next door to a foreclosed property for almost 10 years, that's now a beautiful home with a family there, when I look around my district and all over New York, where we see illegal dumping on our highways and everywhere else, and we know that every place where we try to clean up those knots and perfect those things and perhaps move some graffiti, everything is difficult because of bureaucracy, that makes me want to fight for New York. Hi.
Speaker, how are you?
Good.
So you seem to have all the answers to the questions of why you should run. But so why are you running? What is the delay here? You know, what is probably what we're all thinking right now is you've answered all the questions saying why you're the person that you do. You want to be the soul of the city. So why can't you be the soul of the city and announce that? Another second question.
Okay. The answer is real simple. I'm not ready to announce now. I still have a little bit more thought, a few more discussions to be had, and then when I decide, you all will know immediately. So what's your second question?
Could you walk us through that process a little bit? What you're thinking, where your mind is at for this?
Well, I think I've expressed a lot of it already. Most of it has to deal with the state of New York right now. That and I am still the leader of this council. We have work to do. So there will be a balance between the two things when and if this happens. My state of the city is coming up. You're all invited. It's coming up next week very quickly, and that is a priority of mine as well. So there are a few things that I am looking to take care of before any announcement is made.
And just separately, Governor Poco announced last week these guardrails.
Right.
That she wanted to do to kind of put the mayor in check in the next, you know, few months or a few years or however that all that lasts. A lot of it seemed to be put on the council. So you still have a few more months here? Do you see that moving forward? Where does that stand and how do you feel?
We're in discussion right now over those proposals, about those proposals. There could possibly be some good government moves if those proposals are handled correctly. So we are currently working with, our team is working with the governor's team to see if this is at all feasible. We know that we have to have agreement between both houses before we can ever enact anything on the council level. So those discussions are still happening right now. Yeah. Hi, NJ.
Madam Speaker, good afternoon.
Hi.
You know, when we ask for a lot of these questions of the guy down the hall, he will say, look, the trash is getting picked up. Kids are going to school. The migrant crisis is easing. 9/11 calls are getting answered. Crime is trending lower. He says the business of the city is getting done. Besides resigning, what do you think Eric Adams would want to be doing here?
Again, I'm going to say this again. We need a bold voice to speak to those things that are directly impacting New Yorkers on the federal level right now. Surely, the mayor is in charge of the agencies, so he's got hands on with those agencies and he can speak to those things however he chooses to. I think, though, that there needs to be a next level expression of the pain that people are feeling right now in all of those areas, quite frankly. You know, the garbage is being picked up, but we've still got mounds of trash all over the highway. You know, some children are afraid to go to school right now because they're afraid that, you know, something will happen to them and a host of other things. We've got early childhood education places that are threatened, closure is, you know, they're being threatened with closure. So I believe that, you know, while, you know, the mayor's statements are correct from his perspective, we still need, that's right, mental health concerns as well. There still needs to be a greater conversation so that New Yorkers know that we're with you, we feel you, and we're going to express our malcontent over those things that that may indeed be harming you.
And you're saying he's unable to do that right now?
I don't know if he's able or not. I haven't heard it. I'm saying I haven't heard anything. Yeah.
Hi, Madam Speaker.
Hello.
Have you had any preliminary conversations with the other announced candidates about a potential race choice strategy if you decide to run for mayor? And what sort of response have you received from fellow candidates about your interests?
Great question. Thank you. I have spoken with several candidates. I have not spoken about any particular strategy with them, though. Hi, good.
I'm wondering, just a few months until the June primary and taking into consideration it has been hard for past speakers to mount a successful campaign, how do you plan on meeting the challenge of name recognition and the block running out? And then my second question is, there's been a lot of chatter, obviously, about Cuomo's pending announcement this weekend. Was that directly a prompt for you to file today?
On the Cuomo matter, no. I think I answered that previously also. No, it's been my feelings about the direction that the city is going in more than anything else. As far as the timeline, it is a tight timeline. That's why our decision is going to be very, very soon. You know, whether we do this or not, the decision will be made very, very soon. We are already putting things in place to be prepared to move very, very fast. Once the decision is made, we're going to be doing all due diligence. We've already started doing due diligence already, and we expect to, you know, wrap it up soon. I'm not an impulsive leader, you know, to the gentleman's point in asking the question, why not, you know, say something today? I'm sure you all know I'm pretty, pretty measured in what I do, and I care about the city. So I'm taking very seriously all of the considerations before we do this. So I'm giving this the seriousness that it deserves, realizing the timeline that we're up against, but we are already putting those things in place to be prepared to quickly jump.
Thank you. We'll close out from Steve from Kiny. Kiny Graduate School of Technology.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
You talked several times, Madam Speaker, about hearing the voices of New Yorkers. With the resignation of the four deputy mayors, many New Yorkers may be asking, who's managing the city day to day? We're not able to get answers to those questions from the mayor. Have you been asking that question? And what answers have you made to that?
We have been wondering. We do still have teams that work together with the administration, thankfully. And thankfully, those four deputy mayors are still here. You know, they haven't gone anywhere yet, thankfully. So we are still working with the teams that are in place right now. We do have concerns, you know, about their departure, you know, candidly, we have concerns. We are hoping that those positions are filled very, very quickly with very, very competent leadership that we need to continue to work collaboratively, particularly in this budget season that's coming up.
Is it realistic to think that competent leadership would actually attach themselves to Mayor Adams at this point?
I believe so. Still, I believe so, yes. Thank you all very much. Bye, Katie.
Good job you slept.
Do you think competent leadership would attach themselves to Mayor Adams right now? Do you think competent leadership would assist the administration in finding a solution?
Thank you.
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 Thank you.